Well, I just need to order, like to welcome everybody, glad you're here. I appreciate you taking this time to come to our meetings and glad that you care a lot about what happens in Macon County, so welcome, glad you're here. Take this moment, any announcements, Mr. Manager, you have any announcements?
I've got one announcement, Mr. Chair.
I know you do, go ahead.
My daughter-in-law gave birth to my grandson, seven fifteen yesterday morning. The baby, the mother, and the father are all doing well, including the grandparents.
And the grandparents. Congratulations. Mr. Chairman, do you have any comments?
No. Mr. Chairman, we had marked the calendar for January ninth and tenth, and for any newly elected officials, that's January ninth and tenth in Iskow. For, and on the ninth, we always all decide to go when it's likely a last year. But that's the essentials of county government for these elected officials on the ninth and tenth. If you don't want to go to that, then just on the ninth, for the Benton County officials is about the economy and the vibrant communities, and this is it for the Institute of Government. Always really interesting, I think most of us went last year, me and Bobby and Kevin. Ron, you went last year?
Yeah.
So, that's January ninth, ninth and tenth. It usually starts at ten in the morning, I believe, Jack, ain't that right?
I didn't look at the agenda, but they couldn't be ethnic training.
The ethics training for elected officials, that's two hours of that.
What if it's double treatment hotel work that they do?
I don't want to take that on the face.
I'm not sure if they have that.
I don't think they nailed down the place, so.
It's on the website, they did not advertise it, please.
You'll probably find out tomorrow. You'll probably find out after tomorrow.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, take this, Cory, gesture. Okay. If we do have a rather lengthy agenda, we'll announce that I've been appointed to the North Carolina Legislative Task Force, representing Benton County, representing western part of the state. And what that is, for those of you not familiar with that, every year the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners comes up with things that we want to encourage the legislature to do or not do, and we take that to them. And so, being appointed to this, I've not been on this before, I know Commissioner Davis was on this in the past, I'm not sure if anybody else has, but I know Commissioner Davis was on this.
And Jim, sir.
And Jim, he is for a while.
And here's why it's so important, Mr. Chairman. There's a hundred and seventy legislators in the state of North Carolina. Regardless of the politics, we all knew going in, there's a hundred and one new ones coming to Raleigh. Never been to Raleigh before, a hundred and one. Now, how many of them know how county government works, we don't know. But that's what some of the stuff that Kevin and him will talk about tomorrow. But I think it's really important that, you know, that these folks, we're going to start on November, December the eleventh, twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, meeting us, a lot of these folks, just to let them know a little bit about county government. The county manager's part of that, and it's really important we let them know how county government works.
And last year, we had some concerns, we didn't want expenses passed on to the county, and where we'd have to increase what we spend, and we were very successful in working with our legislators to get that done. So, I'm happy to do that, but I'll be leaving as soon as this meeting is over, driving to Raleigh, so I'll try to expedite as quickly as I can, Mr. Manager.
The rain will hopefully be gone by the time you get here.
I hope so.
It was raining pretty hard when I lived there.
So, you guys pray for safe travels when I leave here.
And those big tickets, I wish to God.
And, okay, with that done, let's stand for just a moment. A lot of things that we need to be thinking about, thinking before, pondering on, clearing our minds of this meeting, and we listen to everyone, the science together, as we do. Thank you. Commissioner Hayes, you leave, if you have a question.
... to divide the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we do not have any time for public hearing tonight, so we'll skip that, skip that out. We have the public comic period, and I noticed on the public comic period, several people are speaking about, appeared they're speaking about ball fields, and that is on our agenda, and I'm sure that you've seen that post, and so we recognize, we have Ken Neets that's here, who wants to speak. Kent, come on in. Can you come on in here?
I'd better stay back here.
He gets a picture in the paper back there. Need you to speak in the microphone, they expect a period.
Pardon me if I'm loud, since I am a school teacher, I should be able to do this. On behalf of the, my name's Ken Neets, I am a travel baseball coach here in Franklin. I coach a thirteen U travel baseball team. I also am an umpire for Little League Baseball. And when I was, when I heard about the possibilities of us getting ball fields, I was thrilled. Just in our travel team alone, I figured out if we had a tournament with ten different age groups, at eight teams apiece, and each team had to pay three hundred twenty-five dollars an entry fee, that's twenty-six thousand dollars just in one weekend. I would say, on a rough estimate, the most expenses that would be paid out in a weekend would be no more than two, three thousand with umpires and trophies and all that. So, you're talking in that about twenty-three thousand dollars a weekend, just for the baseball park. I would love to see that money come back into Macon County. As a travel ball coach, we either went to Georgia, in Clayton, or we went to Canton, and I would much rather keep my team here, in Macon County, in Franklin, and see that money stay in our community. That's not even including the other teams that would have to travel and pay for hotels, pay for food, pay for gas, all that money would stay here locally. The kids would benefit from it, because they're going to have quality baseball fields, and I think we'll get more players to come out, more parents to sign their kids up for baseball. So, I just wanted to give my endorsement for those baseball fields, I think it'd be a great thing for Macon County.
Okay, thank you. Ken, very glad. Todd Enslin?
Todd, welcome. Thank you, sir. It's like you said, my name is Todd Enslin, and as a parent of two young daughters, and a coach of both Little League and girls' travel ball, it'd be a great addition to our community. Both the public, the Little League, and travel ball teams, all of them could be a part of this. The fields are important, like I said, our youth are a community. As travel ball team, we need more places to practice. Little League mainly gets first priority, which Seth is good to work with us to get us the most time we can on everything else. When we go away, we've got a lot of travel expenses for the tournaments and for the families. It's like Ken said a while ago, for revenue, you can bring in a lot of businesses, you've got umpires, concession stands, and more maintenance if we can add. And it's like anything, it's twenty years ago, this park we had here was a great place. People could come and go, but everything's expanding, grown a whole lot. Just like in the girls' Little League itself, we have two-hundred-and-fifty kids in our, just in our, the girls' softball. Out of that, we're working on one field, so you've got, you know, ten to fifteen teams, no, excuse me, twenty to twenty-five teams sharing one field just to play on. My girls and Macon County girls need more space. Softball can be a lifetime sport, you can go from T-ball to high school, to college, industrial leagues, and co-ed. Franklin has been, has been put on the map for the past few years for softball. We've had several All-Star State Championships due to hard work, dedication of the youth, and the high school softball team has won three straight conference championships, as well as three championship conference tournaments. These girls are the first true girls that has hit the wave of travel dollars, which is the way things are going now. They set a bar, and we need to continue what we've got right now. By having this complex, it's really going to help. You look at, we go on tournaments now, not counting the entry fees, most of the time the families are going to spend four-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred dollars a weekend when you go.
Exactly.
That is per family, and like I said, that would be mean, and I'd be like, if my mom and dad wanted to go. You're looking at that, that's just what you're picking, your gas, food, motels, and stuff like that.
That's just one family.
Yeah. You've got ten players on a team, right? That's roughly forty-five-hundred dollars that you're going to throw into the economy for, you know, you're looking at, gas, motel, entertainment, and that's love, and food, and stuff like that. So, if you've got twenty teams in a tournament, you've thrown ninety-thousand dollars into your economy right there. So, please help our youth while you have this opportunity to do so. I mean, ninety-thousand dollars, I mean, that's on the line, I mean, that you could go in. So, help these girls and the boys if you can.
Todd, you said you coached, you coached the girls, the girls' track.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Beasley, Chris, you here? And Chris, want to speak to the Leagues Online? Chris, you up?
My name is Chris Beasley. I'm here tonight representing Depot Street Pawn located at one-two-six Depot Street here in Franklin. I would like to speak chief tonight in regards to the ordinance that is being considered that would require all pawn shops in the county to submit their daily business transactions to the commercial website of Leeds Online. First, I would like to address the misconception that pawn shops deal with large amounts of stolen items. As stated on the National Pawn Brokers Association website, less than half of one percent of all pawn merchandise is identified as stolen goods. This is because pawn shops require customers to provide valid government-issued photo ID, and we also give a complete description of all items brought into the store, including the make, model, and serial number if applicable. We also submit a description and weight for all jewelry we take in. This information is in faxed through to the Franklin Police Department. No officers visit our shop to pick up the tickets. The fact that pawn shops take such personal information of both the customer and items and in fax it through to law enforcement, this dramatically decreases the amount of stolen merchandise that is brought into pawn shops. In regards to the information we require, most of it is extremely sensitive and qualifies as non-hudlith personal information under federal privacy law, and is entitled to protection as such. The fact that Leeds Online is a third-party commercial website raises the question if it is lawful to require shops to submit their customers' sensitive information, especially considering part of the website's marketing ploy is that our customers will never find out we're submitting the information to them. A large percentage of our customers come to us because they have no other options, and pawning one's belongings is a last resort, and I personally feel submitting their information to a customer, a commercial database is just another blow to the customer. Aside from the concerns for our customers' privacy, another issue that we have is with the ordinance is that it will only apply to pawn shops. We follow all laws and requirements set forth on a local, state, and federal level. All items we pawn or buy are checked in and submitted to the Franklin Police Department. However, there are other businesses that buy in similar items that are not mandated by any laws, such as gun shops, jewelry stores, and scrap metal facilities. I believe these businesses, well, when a gunshot buys a firearm in, they are not required to alert law enforcement. Same with gold and silver, or anything else bought by jewelry stores or scrap metal facilities. I believe these businesses are more likely to buy in stolen items, not intentionally, but through the simple fact that there is far less of a chance of a criminal getting caught if they take the items to these places. This ordinance is passed will not apply to these other types of businesses, and will only serve as more mandates for pawn shops who already have to follow strict guidelines, which we at Depot Street Pawn adhere to to the absolute best of our abilities. Another concern is that Leeds Online claims that our competitors will not be able to see the information we submit to it, such as what we pawn a certain type of item for, or what we buy items in at, that only law enforcement will see this information. This is for the most part true, except for the fact that our pawn shops owned and operated by law enforcement officials, the nearest example being Friendly's in Mountain City, Georgia. While it may not seem a big issue to those who are not affiliated with the pawn shop, the fact that there is a pawn shop operated by a law enforcement official so nearby is a big concern for us, because what is to stop this establishment's owner from looking over power in all other local pawn shops, pawn and buy histories? In closing, I ask that the board not pass this ordinance, not only for the sake of our customers' privacy, or the fact that it will only apply to pawn shops, or either that our information could be compromised to our competitors, but also for the fact that this website is still in its infancy, with only a little over two, twenty-one hundred agencies in the whole of the country using it, directly twelve percent. And if the database were to be compromised and the information contained within stolen, the outcome for all involved could be devastating. I thank you for your time, and I think we'll give our arguments and consider.
James, have you spoke to the sheriff?
No, he never came by our shop. We did speak to the chief of police.
Well, this is a clarify for case, this came from Sheriff Holland, Brown, if you want to.
Yes, sir, and he has spoken with the chief as well. The town is going to piggyback on anything the county ends up enacting. I want to clear up one thing, it does apply to the precious metal dealers, there's a, the laws regarding scrap metal have been changed, so they have to gather a lot more information and keep a lot more records, that applies to them as well. And there's a new, and that's in a different chapter of general statutes. There is a new entity called a cash converter that is going to be dealt with in the same chapter that deals with pawn brokers. Anyone who purchases goods from the public for cash, has to start keeping records. They're not quite as stringent as what the pawn shops have to do, but it would apply to them as well, and the proposed ordinance that I've seen that Mr. Jones drafted includes all of that.
Right, I'd like to suggest, I think Mr. Beasley brings some good points, could we, would it be okay, why don't you separate the meeting between you and the sheriff and Mr. Beasley, that'd be okay with you, to meet and maybe discuss some of these points?
Yes, sir.
And we'll address this as agenda, like, yeah, because it's not under consideration by the board right now, it's just predicted by the sheriff, is, I guess, an information out of last month, whether?
Yes, sir. Now, it's my understanding it might be on next week's agenda, I, we can definitely, now, the sheriff has had a sick child, so maybe he meets with me first, and then when he gets a chance to come.
You guys could do that, I think that'd be helpful.
We can definitely do it.
Okay, thanks.
Let me make a statement on this thing, and I'm all for it in every way that I can to try to get our law enforcement, our emergency worker, the tools that they need in any way to help. In a situation like this, so I talked with the sheriff, and I put this attorney about it, and same time I took it upon myself to go ask the pawn shops how they felt about it, in which Chris and Governor Jones sat back, I did talk to. I talked to the people at Stainy's Pawn Shops, they call it Frivley or Double A, something like this, on the south side of town. They had a similar reaction to it, and then I talked to the people who had pawn shops over on Hightower, they were all ready, they were all for it. So, is a possible change if you talk to Chris and about his pawn shops, is possible to talk with the others too?
Yes, sir, and I know the sheriff had talked to several.
He said he had.
Yeah, including some metal dealers, that, as well, but I can't tell you the exact number of who he's talked to or tried to talk to, but I can definitely find out.
I'm only making recognition, because like I say, you know, I made private meet to talk to the sheriff about this, and I just went and talked to pawn shop dealers and see what their opinion is, to at least let everybody's voice be heard on this matter.
Yes, sir.
Right, I do think it'd be helpful to meet with any of the ones that would be interested, you know, Chris, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris, for bringing this.
We have Jamie Styles, Jamie's here, and is also a member in the recreation office.
Appreciate the opportunity to speak to you guys. As Kevin said, I am here to talk about the ball fields, and when I was approached about the possibility of speaking here, it was actually on the pretense of related to travel ball, and so I'll speak briefly on that, and then I'll move on to something that I think's a little more important. I did actually pull some numbers, and I won't go through all these in detail and bore you with that, but I actually pulled numbers on what the guy that runs the tournaments in Canton has done this year, and I'll be happy to share any of those with you. And Ken's already talked about the possibility on the financial aspect of it, just in terms of the tournaments themselves. The other aspect of that is that, based on their participation, there was roughly three-hundred-and-fifty-three ball players per tournament that went to Canton, and Todd talked about, you know, what each family spends, and so on and so forth. And honestly, in a local area like this, I mean, you have some teams that are close enough where they're not going to stay in the motels, but every team that comes here, they're coming for two days, they're going to eat, they're going to buy gas here. So, when you're talking about three-hundred-and-fifty-three ball players, I'd say that four people per ball player coming into the county is probably very conservative, so you're talking about fourteen-hundred people, or probably more, that are in the county for those two days, and are buying food at the restaurants, buying gas, so on and so forth. So, we're talking about boosting the economy, you're talking about an extra fourteen-hundred people for two days. They host a twelve tournaments this year, so there was twelve weekends where they had an extra fourteen-hundred people in town. So, you can see, you can see the economics, you guys know the economics about those kind of things better than I do, obviously. To me, what's more important, and I have been a travel ball coach, often on for the last several years, I've got two kids that play travel ball, so, you know, obviously the expense thing is an issue, but to me, from y'all's perspective, the impact on the economy is more important than the impact of us as individuals when we have to travel, we do that by choice. But to me, what's more important is the local leagues, and the opportunity for every kid to have a chance to play baseball and to get better at it. And I can tell you from personal experience, my oldest is a thirteen-year-old, he still plays, and as a matter of fact, he plays in Neets right now. Baseball has been, outside of home and church, has been probably the best thing that's happened in his life in terms of social skills and confidence and different things like that. And I've seen other kids, including some underprivileged kids, that have, what I believe, I believe have developed into better people as a result of being involved in these team sports and being supported by people in a positive way. And I would really like to see our local leagues have more opportunities. I think it was Todd that mentioned that, you know, the limited number of fields we have, and the massive amounts of people that we have, the number of kids that are coming out to play baseball, there's just not enough fields to handle them off. And I can tell you personally, I'm coming to you from a perspective of somebody that has built their own field for the purpose of practicing baseball teams down there. If you guys traveled down to Georgia Road on the left-hand side, as you're going south, you see the baseball building on the pasture, that's mine. And the reason I built that is because it was so hard to find places for kids to practice. Just this year, I've had four different Little League Baseball teams practice there, I've had four different travel ball teams practice there, and I've had actually four different All-Star teams practice on that field as well, and it's simply because they need a place to practice. And so, having said all of that, again, I feel like travel ball is an important aspect of it, but more important than that is what we're doing for our, for our local kids here and giving them the opportunities that they need to have. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jamie. Billy Van Drew is here. He's been with us a little bit, he's been at the Mobile, good welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I'd just like to say thanks to all you guys, Commissioner, I don't need the job you do, but I appreciate the job you do, I know the time that you take, the time you spend, and certainly appreciate what you do for our county, and at this time, I'd like to say a special thank you to Bobby Cuppers for the time that he's spent, and I hope he's not finished in this business yet, I hope he's got more to give, I know he's been a good one hanging in there. I'm here to represent boys and girls Little League sports, I'm not going to say baseball or baseball, dude. I certainly believe, after being coach athletic director and school teacher for thirty years, I can take numbers and prove to you that athletes and people that are involved in athletics have a much better chance in life than those kids who never get involved. It's been proven, and proven, and proven, and proven. So, that, you know, it doesn't have to be proven again, but it can be if it needs to be. Many years ago, back in the late sixties and early seventies, I can remember riding my dad out to the old county home to a baseball field that we could play on if the carnival didn't come, and stuff like that, and then all of a sudden, we were riding over to the old Burlington plant, and my dad saying, we're going to have a ball field here one of these days. And lo and behold, through the late sixties and early seventies, we got a ball field. Not only did we get a ball field, we got the best ball field in western North Carolina. We were the envy, the absolute envy of western North Carolina. And I say western North Carolina, it stretches past western, according to whoever came to our park, they were endies. And I had the opportunity to coach there, and never once did a team come to our park that they didn't talk about how wrecked that park was. We were way ahead of our time. And I was, I was certainly always proud, and I'm still proud of our park, for what it is, we have an art recreation. It's just unfortunate that we've got the same park that we had thirty-five years ago. If it hasn't, as far as being able to add people to it, that park hasn't changed. And our numbers have just grown, and grown, and grown, and grown. I mean, we've had college teams play baseball on the baseball field in Macon County wreck park. That's pretty big. Now, they get a lot of home runs when they play there, but they like, they like to play there. We also have had many, many, many other things going in that wreck park, not just baseball. And while I'm there, I'm going to also say, in the, up to the middle seventies there, we finally got that community facility built. We got an extra gymnasium. You could actually have Little League ball practice on the court, where you didn't turn around from one goal and run into the next goal, that's the way all our elementary schools were. And so, it's not just baseball, it is basketball, it is other forms of athletics, it is other forms of recreation, it is singing, it is concerts, it's those things that's going on there. And, and I can just tell you, we have a lot to be proud of, but it's time for us to have more than what we've got. I, I think that if we could, if we could draw the big picture for you, and get to the end of this thing, it's certainly to me a no-brainer. The numbers they're talking about, I have a letter here from Kevin Dabney, and Kevin Dabney is also a travel ball coach, he's also on our board, our Little League Baseball Board. And in his letter, he says some of the same stuff that's been said, but he also, he had a number, which I think is a, is a good number. He said that his family, playing from Canton to Clayton to Morton, spends about two-thousand dollars a year, and that's for his one, one family. And from my experience talking to these guys, I think that's true, but I'm not a travel ball person. I'm not here to speak for travel ball, but I tell you what I am, I'm smart enough to know that that travel ball business is a money business. There's people in that business now that's not there because their kids are playing ball, but they're there because there's money in that business. I met with, I met with two guys two years ago, and tried to influence them heavily to do what everybody else is doing with these club league parks. The thing that couldn't happen at that time, if we talk about it, was finding the right piece of property. I mean, that's what it's all about, is finding the right piece of property. But we're not talking about thousands of dollars here, folks, it's not thousands, we're talking millions of them. And I think I can spend that for you anytime that you want to sit down and look at what's going on. We're talking about millions of dollars over, over a short period of time. I'm not even a travel ball coach, and that guy from Canton calls me about every two weeks and going, oh, we're going to play next year. You know, why's he calling me? Because he knows I'm in baseball, he knows I always have been, he wants me to have a team, and, and that's what they're doing, that, they're making, they're making big bucks. The first time I drove to Clayton, when somebody told me about their complex down there, I could not believe, when I drove into Clayton and saw what they had for ball fields. And then, had you been to their football field, or their two football fields, and their gyms, and their indoor complex? And, that's Clayton. Come on, give me a break. Clayton's fine, I don't have a problem with that, but come on, Clayton's got that, and we can't compete with that? Canton, Canton is almost dried up over there. Did a little work over this summer, and it's hard to find a place to eat in Canton anymore, but look at their, look at their facilities for recreation. Silva, Silva doesn't have the complex that everybody else has as far as it being used, but they have pumped a bunch of money into their own complex. And they also, my numbers show here that they just spent five million dollars on the new rec center in cashers. You know, that's, that's really hard for me to believe, that they would spend that kind of money on a rec center in cashers. And that's without a tax increase. Now, granted, I think Clayton had a little tax increase through sales tax, but Jackson County's been able to do what they've done, they constructed a twenty-five-thousand square-foot rec center in the two thousands, and they added two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the Mark Watson Park over there in the two thousands. You know, so, you know, we're, we're way behind with the money that we put in, in direction of recreation. In December two thousand, Haywood County, sixty-five-thousand In December two thousand, Haywood County, a sixty-five thousand square foot center opened over fifty-five acres of land and two rec centers for Haywood County. And, and I'm just gonna tell you what I believe. Rayburn County, Haywood County, Jackson County, everything else, they don't come close to that. I would not, tomorrow, if they paid me to live in another county, Lee Mason County's being a campus, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying they've had a little foresight here, and they've spent some money that they need to save. And, and I think, I think that you will, you will find in the end that you'll have your return on your money. I know that, I know these travel ball guys, I've kept up with them, I don't get involved much, but I know what they're telling you the truth, and I hope you do it for travel ball, but more importantly, I hope you do it for our kids in Mason County. You know, our kids shouldn't have to be out till ten o'clock at night at the rec, and they should be able to get a field before that. We have right now, I'll end with this, over six hundred boys and girls from ages five through thirteen. The next closest to us is Jackson County, who has under four hundred. We have five hundred adults still trying to play, who can't do now what they couldn't do then, but they're still right there. Six to five hundred. The next closest is Jackson County with three hundred. Rayburn County, Haywood County, they only become close by numbers, but they have much, many more and much better facilities. My challenge to you is to, to do the very best you can for the kids in Mason County, and in return, I would help you any way possible through our county. I remember E.J. Whitmire. I remember E.J. Whitmire going out and getting people involved.
I remember him making his pick-up rock there.
I guarantee you, E.J. Whitmire was, had as much foresight and to talk to people and get people involved as much as anybody that's ever lived in this county. And the reason being, E.J. Whitmire got up there and picked them rocks up. He didn't, he didn't point in the direction, he was out there with you. He had foresight. And in many ways, I thank E.J. Whitmire for what we have out there. I think without him, we could have fallen short right there. But it's time for us to find that E.J. Whitmire and move forward for Mason County. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Bill.
Kevin, we have a lot of other folks here that sit there, not gonna speak, but they're involved in working with our kids in Mason County. If you're a coach or assistant coach, if you could stand up, if you're a coach or assistant coach, or you work with kids in Mason County. Now, back in mine and Billy Van Hook's days, it was Bill from Corbin Herman team. Sure was. So these are the folks, these are folks who've put in their lives and their energy in the kids of Mason County, and they deserve our thanks every day.
And Hollis makes you feel contemplation a bit, don't you, Hollis? One of these guys really talks.
He can throw it a hundred and twenty miles out there.
Only difference, Kevin, Hollis could do it then.
Right, exactly right. Thank you, thank you, Bill, for your comments. That ends our public comment period, that was all the public that signed up for that. Item number seven is adjustments and approval of the agenda, and as you see, we've got an agenda before you. Are there anything, is there any items we need to add to the agenda or delete the agenda?
Just under reports and presentations, Mr. Chairman, it's a real, really short, under eight D, from our last month's meeting of the Association of County Commissioners, just to bring the board up to speed on some things that's going on.
Okay, let's add eight D, would be Northern Association of County Commissioners' report for Commissioner Beal. Any other items to add?
Mr. Chairman, are we getting a new, are we getting a new agenda for meeting next Tuesday?
We will, is this our primary agenda? Yeah, and just full disclosure here, I think I've mentioned the most of you, as we came in, I know we talked about how long the agenda was, and you guys can see how long it is. We had so many items, I'd asked Jack to sort of divide that up, but we will have a continuation meeting next, next Tuesday, and we'll finish up this agenda, so, yeah, Jim, you'll have an agenda for that one.
Sure, we're gonna do that at six or six-thirty, right? What are you on there?
Did you have, you had to contemplate?
Six to six-thirty, is that a problem?
Now, we have an hour.
You reset it to any date, time, and place?
Over five minutes, please.
Yes, yes. He's wearing it.
In the camp, in the camp.
Okay, we'll, we'll do that at the end of the meeting, but yeah, that'll be fine.
About six-thirty?
We'll do it six-thirty next, next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Anything else to add to the agenda or delete? If not, a motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
Say it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Under reports and presentations, we have, actually, this is the second time I've heard about this today, we had Gary Deals, who was very active in our local Rotary Club and very involved in the Read to Me, and I believe it says Imagination Library, talked to some of us today. Brittany Parker is here to speak to us about the Read to Me program, so Brittany, welcome.
We do have some pretty nice ball fields over there, so, we already popped it up for you.
Is that what, Kevin?
Second base, please.
Just don't have any athletes to put on.
Obviously, I feel a little nervous, we'll see, we'll see. All righty, guys, here, I'm not really here for Mason County news, I'm here because I'm part of Read to Me. Yeah, I've already heard about Read to Me. We kind of have a three, three promise mission statement. The first one is to increase the public awareness and community involvement in early literacy, to get books to the hands of children reading at birth, we try to focus on from birth to third grade, and then to train and educate parents about the role in raising their readers. For the past year, year and a half, we've had several events, and given out countless books at Pumpkin Fest and other festivals, and had, we just, past weekend, we had a Where's Wado event and celebrated twenty-fifth anniversary of Where's Wado, and gave out books and did parent training there. So our newest venture is a partnership with the Highlands Literacy Council. And that's what you have in front of you. It's part of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, and what that is, you have a brochure in front of you, so I won't go into it too much, but it provides kids from birth to five years old with a book every month, every month until they're five, from the day they sign up. They have to sign up for them all over the county, and as soon as they fill out the sign-up form, they get, they get their first book within about eight weeks. We have a matching grant, I'll read you the letter, a matching grant so, that the Highlands Literacy Council is able to get, and they're already doing this in Highlands, and so they want to expand to the rest of Mason County, and they've reached out to us with Read to Me to kind of be the pillar down here for them. Dear friend of literacy, Read to Me is a community effort to promote reading with the focus on children from birth to age five. As part of our mission, we distribute books to children at various events and provide paternal training on the importance of reading. We now have an exciting opportunity to partner with the Literacy Council of Highlands and the Dolly Parton Imagination Library program. Through this combined effort, we can reach many more children in Mason County. Dolly's program provides age-appropriate books each month directly to preschool children born in Mason County. Many of these children have little or no exposure to books in the world that books open. Recent articles in the Mason County News and the Franklin Press provide graphic details of the programs in Mason County. Data shows that over fifty percent of children are ill-prepared for kindergarten, lacking skills with recognizing letters and sounds, identifying colors and shapes, and having a basic vocabulary. We believe that this community can make a difference. The Literacy Council has raised some funds to initiate the partnership with the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, but we are still short. To meet the shortfall, three generous, three generous supporters are offering a grant to match community donations, dollar for dollar, up to seven thousand five hundred. A condition of the grant is that we must collect the matching funds by the end of December. One hundred and fifty donations of thirty dollars will ensure that every child receives one book per month from birth to age five. A thirty-dollar donation provides a scholarship for one child for, for a full year, with the grant instantly becomes a sponsorship supporting two local children for a year. Your contribution of thirty dollars, or whatever amount you can afford, would be a great Christmas present to a local child. All the money donated goes directly to the Dolly Parton effort, and there are no local administrative costs. Together, we can make a world of difference, make, make a world of difference. I'm not asking, I know you can't, the community funding pool is up for the year, so we're not asking for money from the county, we kind of want the county to know what we're doing as an individual community group. The first year, there are currently nineteen hundred kids that we've estimated from zero to five years old in Mason County, that's going on the current kindergarten enrollment numbers. The first year, we plan to have, we plan to reach five hundred kids and grow it each year after that. Like I said, they get the book the first, after eight weeks of signing up, any kid can sign up, and everything that the organization that we receive and all the donations that we receive is tax deductible. So, do you have any questions about the program?
So, do you say each commissioner should buy three books?
You certainly should, you certainly should.
I can tell you, having heard this from Gary Deals and this Imagination Library...
Garrett put money into it?
He said he did.
You do all right, you've got your money.
I can tell you that I've tended to make the donation myself to this, I think it's a wonderful project. This was begun actually by Dolly Parton in Sevier County, Tennessee, and she funded that herself, well, she's a multimillionaire, it's easier for her to do it than it is me, but what a great program it is. And study after study after study after study has shown that the higher ability of reading the child has when they start school, the more success they have knowing in school and the later in life, it's, it's just a proven fact, so, good for them.
Then was we were at, at the Mountain View School and they'd done the end of the year?
I know, several commissioners have been, thanks, and I'm, Mr. Pepperidge came, came to something that we had also. That was gracious. We had our, it was our Little League Night, and we partnered with a North Carolina author for her book, and it was, I guess it was around March, maybe, no, it was later than that, because it was, it was, we did the What Needs to be an American contest, it was after Fourth of July, it was around, I think it was around one or something, I don't know.
Some of these kids writing in the mail.
And we, and we, we have, we do follow-up things with them also, not the books that we give them, so we keep track, we get your books and things like that. And we do events, we have another one, another essay contest, like the one that you, you came to plan for February to do a president's day essay contest again this year, so, you guys, have any questions?
So you send the check to the Rotary Club, right?
You can send the check to the Rotary Club, which is on the, the letters that I gave you. You can drop it off at the library, you can contact anybody that's listed at the bottom of your, at your sheet that you noted involved, you can drop it off at Picken County, any Mason County schools, the central office, Rotary Club, the Mason County News, and I think that's about it, and the library, if I didn't misread that. And there's even an address on, what you have here, has the address to send it directly to Dolly Parton, if you wanted to do that often. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Greg. The, the next item is Seth Adams. Seth, I feel like I need to say just a word, I can give you just a minute before we get into this, and Chester can, can help me with this. I almost feel like, those of you that know me well, know my favorite TV show of all time is, is what? Andy Griffith Show, that's my favorite show. I really loved the one about the, the gold truck coming through town. You guys have ever seen that, big, big secret, and Andy had told Barney we need to keep this secret and this kind of thing, and then when he went to the filling station, Gomer asked him, said, "Well, Andy, when's the gold truck coming through?" And I feel a little bit that way. This, the ball fields are something that we've been talking about in the two years that I've been a commissioner, and before that, because I had conversations without going for Mr. Davis and Brian McClellan, who are the two most recent members that have left this board, both of them have been involved in conversations about the need for more recreation space. We've talked about that. Seth, the rec, the rec board has, has had that conversation many, many, many times, talked to this board about it, and Hollis, and Ken, and Todd, and Jankie and Billy, the commissioners have heard from guys like you and ladies like you, I know, over the past few years. So with that said, the commissioners have been looking for some, the difficulty in the mountains is that you gotta put a ball field somewhere that's flat, okay? You gotta have, you can't put a ball field on the mountainside, if you do, then you have hundreds of thousands of dollars of grading to do. So the difficulty is finding somewhere to put a ball field. So that's been something that has been talked about for some time, and I'm just prefacing this, because I don't want you to think this has just come out of the middle of the air. So this, a piece of property that Seth is gonna mention, did come to this board's attention some time earlier this year, in the past six months, and so we began talking, and we did meet in executive session, our friends in the meeting will let you know that, we did meet, and that's because it wasn't our place to divulge that this property was possibly for sale and that kind of thing, so we discussed that with our attorney in closed session. So with that said, we, we met, myself, Mr. Coppers is on the, on the rec commission, and Jack met with the owners of the property, as well as Seth, a number of times, and I'm giving you a brief description of what happened over the past six months. And we also wanted to make sure we got, if we purchased something, it was a good, a good price and a good deal for the county. Chester, if I do no pet, and you help me out if I didn't say anything out here. They just want to let people know where this came from. This is not a new thing. We, this is, we're not just pulling this out of the air, we've been talking about this for a long time. This is the first time, but to take any action on it or to take any possible action, we do that in public, and that's, that's what we're doing here tonight. I will say, and Chester helped me if I didn't use any particular language, Mr. Beal has excluded himself from the discussion, he's on the board at Mason Bank, I think it's okay to say that, I just did. He's on the board at Mason Bank, Mason Bank is peripherally involved, they're indirectly involved and directly involved in this property, and Chester, I'm gonna say more about that, but that's enough to say. Commissioner Beal is, is on the board of Mason Bank. So he and I talked about that earlier, felt like it would be unethical for him to be involved in it, so I will tell you, and the other board members can verify by head nod, that Commissioner Beal has not been involved in any conversations about this privately, and he will not participate in any type of discussion tonight, which I've asked him to do, and Chester, is that accurate? Is that right? I think that's sort of where we've, we've come from, we've heard from the community over the past two to three years about this need for ball fields. We think, we thought possibly we found a place, pitched that to Seth, to the rec commission, the events and discussions, and through that, it's gotten out in the community a little bit, we were looking at, that's why Seth feel like the gold truck, I think people sort of know that we've been talking about that, and we've been talking about the gold truck a little bit coming, but it's time to talk about it publicly. And so that's why we asked Seth to come tonight and give us a presentation, so Seth, talk to her.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys. It's been a long time, time coming, but I'd like to thank you for listening to the concerns, for seeing the problems, and then trying to come up with a solution. I'd also like to thank everybody that's came in, in support, and all the coaches too, for all they do for the, for the youth of Mason County. Now, we'll, I've got a short presentation of you guys, recreational facility expansion and the economic impact of operating tournaments. Our existing facilities, as you all know, we've got three youth fields, we've got a girls' little league field, we've got a boys' little league field, and we've got an industrial park field. We also have two adult fields. We have softball field, which is two hundred and eighty feet. Any of you that's been to a men's industrial league game lately, it's a home run fest, it's too small of a field to be playing organized men's adult softball there now. And we also have a senior league field. We have one youth field up in Highlands, what's on there, what's not on there is there's also an adult field in Highlands, but that is ran by the town of Highlands, it is not in Mason County's, Mason County's realm. We have one youth field up in Anahela, which nobody, no teams from here go up there to play. They play in, in the Andrews Little League, so they got enough fields, you know, they, they practice their two teams, and they go down to Andrews and participate in their leagues. This past season, we did create one tee ball field at Coliseum Park. We were hoping to do basically what it is, is a backstop and a small field where, where our smallest tee ballers can go, and they had a little game field, and it worked great for them. It doesn't have an outfield or, or fence or anything like that, so it was, it was really, relatively inexpensive to do. We are planning on possibly doing another one of those this summer. That, that one worked out so good, we know that we can go to the other end of the That, that one worked out so good, we, we know that we can go to the other end of that , um, and, and do another one. Our current field usage, um, it's used from anybody from age four to 84. And actually, I think with 84, I'm a little young, I think there's some of those seniors that are playing the old bones or, or approaching 90. I know that one guy, uh, we've got some bats outlawed in the park, and he tells me if, if he's still playing at 90, can he use it? And I told him, I said, "Well, if you're still playing at 90, I'll, I'll write an exception for you to be able to use, uh, use that bat." Um, we've got six leagues vying for space on the six fields that, that basically we have here around Franklin.
Seth, can you go back to, somebody mentioned numbers a while ago. Is that accurate, that we, if I made that up right, we got about 1,100 people?
Yes.
That are, that play sometimes as baseball softball?
Yes. Yep. Um, we've got, uh, little league baseball, we've got little league softball, we've got church league softball, uh, we've got men's industrial league softball, women's league softball, and co-ed softball. In total, this past year alone, that was 92 teams to find the practice and game slots on six fields. It's pretty tough. Uh, you've got, like, you know, like, uh, Billy Van Hutt said earlier, we've got kids practicing at 10 o'clock at night, which is, is not a good circumstance in, in any realm. Um, and, uh, game times also, uh, we're having to max out on our, on our field usage because we have such a, a few number of fields. But, um, that is not including the 10 to 12 travel teams that we have. Uh, that is just Macon County youth teams right there. Uh, not that I'm excluding them in, in our numbers, but for league numbers that we know about, we have these, the, the travel ball teams call them and get a practice time when they can. Uh, we, and we do the best we can with them, but, um, our main focus as far as the Rec Department goes is we gotta take care of the little league program first, and then anything extra that we have, um, we allow the, the travel ball teams to, to kind of take. Um, if it wasn't for people like Jamie Styles that are doing stuff on their own, there's no way we would be able to cover, uh, what we're, what we've got going on. We also practice at, uh, at some of the school facilities, and if any of you have been out there, it's not ideal by any means. Um, those fields are, at best, good practice fields, uh, or not even good. The infield's are rough, um, they're not well maintained, uh, and it's not because of a lack of anything, it's just other than, than time and, and people to be able to do, uh, do those things. Expansion benefits. Um, we, as you have heard, if, uh, we did have an indoor facility, or not an indoor facility, but another outdoor facility, uh, we could come up with better game schedules. Uh, right now, we're playing on every game field that we have every night of the week and at least two games a night. Uh, most of the time, three with, with the adult leagues. Uh, if we had a, a facility where we had four or more fields for, for each league, you could have a couple of open nights for just practice times, uh, you wouldn't be playing as late at night. Uh, hopefully, get kids in bed by, by nine o'clock. I know that I've got a seven, eight-year-old, and, uh, if you played the second game, you were likely to get, get home by 10:30 or 11:00, uh, a lot of times. Improved practice facilities. Uh, like I said, if we had a, another outdoor facility, we could play games there, uh, it would open up more fields for practice, more game-ready fields, uh, kids to have a good infield to play on and, uh, and so forth. Um, room for league growth, more players, uh, in, in my opinion. I think some of them could get sick, having to go to these schools if you live, um, one side of the county and having to go all the way to the other side of the county for a practice, and then when you get there, it's in rough shape or, or something. Um, I think that we, we've lost some in, in the past due to our, our facilities not being as good as, as what they, what they are in other places. People move in, they play for a year and say, "Ah, this isn't, you know, what it is," and a lot of times, the kids move away, or, or the folks move away. Another benefit is a healthier community. Um, I think we all know that if we keep kids active, um, they not only stay healthier, um, they also make more productive citizens. Um, and, and for, uh, another thing with the adults, um, most of the time, with the adults, if they're playing in a church league or an adult league, you don't have the, the rougher crowd, uh, and it, it seems like it, it, people tend to develop a camaraderie that, that a team gets. Um, team building skills are important for, for all ages, uh, youth and adults. It also would, uh, create an, an awesome tournament destination. And we've talked a little bit about tournaments, uh, in, in previous, but, uh, we'll get into that in a little bit later. Now, onto what we found. This facility is the Parker Meadows, uh, the old Parker Meadows Golf Course on 64 West. Um, as you can see, there's, there's plenty enough space out there, but four adult-sized fields, four youth-sized fields, um, walking tracks, um, and, and room for expansion. Um, it's relatively flat, there'll, there'll be very little grading compared to the, uh, most of the, the areas around that have, have put these complexes up. Most of the time, it's, uh, it's on the side of the mountain, like, like, and they shaved the whole top of the mountain off to get what they've got. Uh, that is, that is not needed here. It is, it is two cloverleafs, uh, with the adults, uh, the fields being 310, and, uh, the kids, or the youth size being 215, but we could easily have that to 220, uh, due to little league changing their, their field, uh, regulations now. And one of those, uh, I'm proposing would possibly be a little bigger, maybe 250, uh, to play, uh, some specialized games and, and stuff on, on that field. Anybody got any questions about that facility?
Seth, I think it's important that, I know in our early discussions about this, we did ask, I mean, if we're looking at a piece of property, we need to know, will it, whenever this winds up being done, will it, will it accommodate what you need to do? That's the reason for the, the drawing here.
Yes.
And this, this is not meant to be an exact?
No, no, no. This is most definitely a preliminary. Uh, I actually met with, uh, with Alliance Consulting Engineers, and, and they did a, uh, a, a plan for us, um, recharge, just, um, to, I wanted to know what could go up there if we had this facility, what are the possibilities? So, this is, this is strictly a, a rough drawing. Uh, i- if we do decide to go with this, we may move some of the fields around, we may, uh, adjust some things here and there. This is, uh, not set in stone by any means. Uh, this is just a, a preliminary, this is what could fit on, on this property. And if, uh, in my opinion, if we get this, uh, with these four adult fields and four youth fields, that, that takes us for the next, uh, 10 to 15 years in growth, no problem, uh, and, and probably, probably further, um, unless we have a, a major, uh, population boom or, or anything like that happens. Um, it, it would vastly ease, uh, a lot of the strains that we have, um, right now and what, what we've got going on. Now, uh, Mr. Evans will speak to the economic side.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioner Menkers, uh, like, uh, like Kevin says, Mr. Chairman, the chairman says he don't wanna get in the way of the gold truck when it's rolling down the road. And I think from the speakers we've had tonight, as you can see, that, uh, not only is it, is there broad public support for this, that this project is needed, and also, there's been some folks that have done the economic benefits today, and I'd just like to take a minute to reiterate some of that if I could. While recreation facilities are built foremost to certain local populations, such that facilities can have a positive impact on the economic development, uh, as a tourist, uh, excuse me, as an athletic tournament destination, in this case, with a travel ball. It's sports and recreation, good for community, but it's also good for business. When you're, when you're developing a, a athletic destination, softball and baseball destination, uh, the number one thing you have to have is infrastructure, the product. And I think you have a unique opportunity with the property that's available for this project, and, uh, you can't, as Mr. Chairman said, you can't find this type of property you just need with that. So, as an old adage is, you strike when iron's hot, you've got an opportunity here, and I think it's, uh, if you pass this one by, I think it'll be a while before you get in that. As our real estate market improves, prices are just gonna go up, you probably won't be able to get this bad young property again. After you build your facility, what, what's your next thing? Well, first of all, we have to work with different organizations, uh, such as the Independent Softball Association, United States Sports, Specialty Sports Association. These are tournament people, and there's other people who put on tournaments. I've spoken with, uh, with promoters from both these organizations, they are enthusiastic about additional product to have, to put on their tournaments with. And, uh, these numbers we're gonna look at are actually from the United States Specialty Sports Association statement, so, we'll see. If you have a 24-team tournament, uh, which is, uh, most tournaments, uh, from what I've talked to Seth and some other people, between 24, 48 teams, uh, you usually bring, a team would usually bring in tw- around 25 player, or 25 people to town, that's players, uh, mom, dad, grand, granddaddy, grandmom, or brothers and sisters. Uh, so, that gives you 600 folks there. Uh, of course, they're gonna be here two days, so that gives you 1,200. And you figure, and this is, this is probably one of the more conservative estimates I could find, $125 per day, uh, minus 1,200, well, that gives you a direct impact of $150, $150,000 that people are going out, they're spending it on their motel rooms, they're spending it on their meals. Robin and I were involved in travel soccer for years, we used to call it a thousand-dollar weekend, uh, because by the time we did all that and Robin went shopping, it was pretty much. And I'll pay for that from later. Uh, but anyway, the, the point is, when people come to town, they spend, maybe they eat. Uh, we're fortunate in having, uh, our area, not only will they come for the tournament, but they'll come for our other attractions within western North Carolina, 'cause we do live in a beautiful area where people wanna come visit. Our location on eastern seaboard as a center, uh, we're centrally located, uh, there are plenty of things in Tennessee, Georgia, South Carolina, and as far as Florida, we'll be looking to come here. So, you take that $150,000, uh, you multiply it by the rollover multiplier, which is, which is the number of times a dollar comes over in your community after the commission comes in. There's figures all over on this place, uh, on this figure is as high as 3.5. I personally think that's a high multiplier, so I'd use a low number on this, which is 1.73. Using that multiplier, your total local economic impact will be 259,500 per tournament. Now, that's not counting what you're gonna make on your concessions or what the promoters are gonna make, what you're gonna make directly doesn't count. That's, that's, that's what's being spent out within the community and local businesses.
Tom, just to begin full disclosure here, uh, we were talking about this, I asked Seth, I guess initially, and then he involved Tommy in this, is economic development, because I wanted to see, our board to see, if we have a place and you have tournaments, what the economic impact could be. And I'm gonna say publicly, and I, we got some guys in the room who know more than I do about it, and I told Seth, I said, "Don't bring us some, don't bring us some inflated figure." I told you that. The 125 is extremely low. Now, guys, I've done, I just retired, I turned 50, I've done, also, I know you're, you're still going, but I did this for 30 years, I traveled and did tournaments all over. And $125 is, is what you would spend on lodging, meals, and fuel a day per, per person. And I think that's extremely low.
Well, and that's my figure.
I understand, and I, and I ask for a conservative figure, because I don't wanna look at, you know, unrealistic numbers. With that said, I think that's, uh, that's fairly low, but, that's it.
And, and one interesting aspect of this, if, if you do develop these tournaments and you start having, say upwards of 12, 16 tournaments a year, that's gonna put pressure on your motel rooms and your, and your community also. Uh, so, you know, one benefit of that is that we're gonna be looking at, hopefully, more people coming in and building facilities for these people staying along with everything else we're doing. If you take that up to a 48-team tournament, uh, of course, you know, you just times it, just double everything, I won't go through all that, but your total local economic impact would be upwards of 519,000 per tournament. And I believe, Seth, correct me if I'm wrong, you would need all eight fields to make, to make that happen, 48 teams.
Well, the 48-team tournament would probably be an adult tournament, and, and it could be played on, on the adult side. The reason why you have fewer teams in the youth side is the games are longer. Um, you can get more games in a day on, on the same amount of fields, uh, thus playing the, the, a larger number straight through. Um, you're gonna probably, especially make more money per team on the youth side, 'cause you, you do have mom, dad, and grandpa, and aunt, and uncle, sometimes family, and brothers and sisters.
By temporary fixes, you can use the larger field, thus you could use all?
Yeah, you can.
All fields involved.
Yeah, we'll be able to make our, our large, our large fields smaller also, uh, in case we, we do have a, a super large tournament.
And they've had as many as 45 in a weekend in Canton this year.
Yeah.
Youth teams. It's hard to say, because they're not all in one complex. They, they use high schools and middle schools and things like that, because their biggest complex has three fields.
Okay. Well, 519 from a 48, from a 48-team tournament, uh, from my discussions, a season runs from March to November, uh, from people I've talked to, uh, you can, uh, a lot of people suggest having one tournament format, if you wanna do that much, no more than one adult or one youth tournament, but, uh, there are some markets that can support that. So, you know, number one, this benefits the community. It benefits our youth, it benefits our aging population, it's good, it, as we said, these sports build character, they build, uh, they build health, they make us a healthy community. It's also, just having that facility is good, it's a tool in our economic development toolbox for businesses locating Macon County. Uh, if you're bringing a business out of Florida and you want to relocate to Macon County, you want to know that, that county is aggressive and has good facilities, and this, you know, this would be a state-of-the-art facility. Uh, so, you know, that's a win-win also. It's also good, it's our reputation as a retirement community, and there's a ton of, of, uh, older folks playing, uh, playing softball, Mr. Beal.
I don't mean to cut people there, though.
But it's a, it's a win-win, it's a win-win for the community, it's a win-win for economic development. Sports and recreation, like I said, is, is good for community, it's good for business. And I know this sounds cliche, it's, but Seth is forcing me into saying, if you build it, they will come.
You didn't wanna say that, did you?
Seth, did anybody look at, like, tournaments, like little league tournaments or girls' tournaments? And it's a big, the playoffs. They don't have, like, state playoffs and district playoffs?
We already get, and, and the, the little league, our folks can, can back me up on this, they usually tend to let us have a lot of what we want anyway, because we run the tournaments right. This will just enable us to, to host more. Um, right now, we, we usually have a, some kind of little league playoff game on every facility that we have. Um, a lot of times, we've gotta turn it away, 'cause we've got adults and other things playing, uh, on, on those game times. I know that we would've been in the, in the finals, um, in the final run, and, and which was, they were gonna narrow it down to, to three towns, basically, for the southeast region, for the 15 and 16-year, or 13 and 14-year-olds, this past year, if we would've had one more 300-foot field. Uh, that's the criteria, that they, they wanted you to have three, and we only had...
That's a big deal.
It would've been huge, if, those games were aired on ESPN. Um, those, those teams, it's not a lot of teams coming in, but it is a lot of publicity, where they, they come and view it, uh, we would've had to put the, put the kids up somewhere and feed them and all that stuff, and we had everything else taken care of, we just couldn't find another 300-foot field that was within range.
While we're talking about this, um, I know, and I'm gonna agree with what Billy said, I think the first thing you look at with fields is you, you accommodate your population lives here, that we're, we're the ones that would own these fields and, and it's, it's for our folks that already live here that, that contribute to the community, contribute to the county, and we need to have that, and I would agree, that's first and foremost. But to me, secondarily, I mean, the economic impact of this is something that, that I've been looking at it. It's, uh, it's something you and I talked about a little bit, the potential of where Franklin's located. Can you talk just, just a little bit about your conversations with, with... Can you talk just a little bit about your conversations with Mike Hallwell and some of these guys that you talked to about the potential of tournaments coming here?
Speaking with a couple of the tournament directors around, Franklin's better situated to pull folks out of Georgia and still get the finish from North Carolina and Tennessee that say Cherokee and Silva and Canton is right now. We're going to pull from a bigger gene pool, we'll say, than everybody else. Therefore, our numbers are going to be, well, we don't know yet. We're also within a half an hour of Cherokee, which will enable us to have what they call super tournaments, which there'll be a tournament in Cherokee going on and a tournament here going on. And since we're within, it will play down to, you'll play down to half, you'll cut half the teams out and they'll move to one facility or the other on the second one. And those are major economic impacts for those weekends because you're talking about 100-plus teams that come to those, and they travel from, or they are folks from everywhere. I mean, you fly to these events. So, I'd say the actual airport would get bombarded with folks, or Atlanta, and people would drive here. But we were the missing link to a lot of ball fields. They had said between Cherokee, Silva, and Clayton, to be able to tie all those ball fields together, they needed one more within a half an hour, and we are kind of the missing link in that aspect. And our goal, with speaking to a couple of the directors, is to be able to host one adult tournament and one youth tournament per month. That lets everybody else kind of feel, you know, they're not getting left out, plus it doesn't water it down. It'll be a special thing to come to Franklin's play.
You can take those numbers, potentially 16, if you're going to make that decision.
Seth? You have any questions?
I've just been on the little league board the last couple of years, and we were turned down a couple of times. Now, we could have had all-star tournaments here. They wanted to have them here, but when they came to check the facilities, they said they just couldn't push that issue. And, you know, when you have that there, again, every child brings four or five with them. And we do travel ball, and I wish I could get away for a weekend for 250 bucks. It's probably, it's double that. We play a lot, you know, it's easily double that.
Thanks, Seth.
Okay, I've got one other thing that you're going to do this call, but I want to mention it to you. November 24th is Small Business Saturday, and we in Macon County are celebrating that, and shop small posters in all our local businesses and distributed in all our local businesses, encouraging people to shop in Macon County. And y'all got one, so thank you so much.
Couple things I want to, thank you, guys. Good presentation. Any questions of Seth or Tommy, committee committee, anybody? Okay. Part of the discussion we've had, too, if you go build a ball field, you have to have these properties built on it. The flatter the better. This property is 48 acres, and I just play golf out there, it's flat as this floor. So it's flat to start with, which is a huge advantage. But even with that, you still have to pay for it, whatever it is. And part of that discussion led us to talk to some of our folks with the state, talked with Mr. Davis, former Commissioner Davis, Senator Davis, and also Roger West, our representative and I'll mention him at the moment, them. But part of that discussion that we've had is about their Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. So, Mr. Covers has been on our rec commission and has been involved in some discussions about that. So, Mr. Covers, would you mention availability of those?
When this ball got rolling, one of the things that Seth and I, we couldn't share a whole lot, but we shared what we could, what we talked about was the possibility of tying into the Parks and Recreation Trust Fund, which I'll call PARTOF from now on because it's easier, and seeing if we couldn't tie into some of that money. In talking with Lou Ann Bryan, who came over, actually laid eyes on the property, we went out and walked the property and talked about the possibilities, her recommendation is that they're really anxious to let money go when you're buying new property rather than just redeveloping old property because from their perspective, it puts that property into Parks and Recreation, and it wasn't there before. So, my understanding, and she, while Lou Ann cannot grant the money, and everybody needs to understand that, and she says that very much in her letter that each of you guys have. She can't grant the money, but she sure could stop it from happening if she wanted to. She was very impressed with this particular piece of property. I don't know how you couldn't be if you went out and looked at it as flat as it is. And recommended that if we get a good application together, we haven't had any PARTOF money here to the county for a long time. We're due, in other words, they try to spread the wealth around, so there's a good probability that we'll get some. Could get up to a half a million, but that probably will not be quite a half a million. We don't really know yet till we get into the application process. But the bottom line is that it's very likely that at least half of the purchase price, which we'll discuss here in a minute, because I don't want to get across the breakers with a lawyer, about half of that may come back to us from PARTOF grant. So, when you hear what the price is, and you figure theoretically, we're going to pay a half of that, you really still look like it's going up. I'd like to just say one other thing at the risk of being a true lame duck. The person that I think deserves a lot of credit here, who stood up and presented but has taken no credit for it whatsoever, is the person that made me aware of it and got the ball rolling. And that's your Parks and Rec director, Seth Adams. If he doesn't keep his ear to the ground, if he doesn't keep his eyes open, we're not here tonight talking about what we're talking about. So, before we get out of this thing, no matter what we do, whether we do it or whether we don't do it, my hat's off to him and his rec board who have pushed and pushed and pushed and begged us to do something, just something, and to help the kids of this county. Well, Ed Gumm, I told you to be patient, and here we are. And so, I don't know what's going to happen in the next 15 minutes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that this gentleman out here got the credit that he deserves because he's the one that clued us in to the possibility of this even happening. So Seth, for me, thank you very much. If it wasn't for you, we wouldn't be doing this right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Take that one step further about that PARTOF grant. I took the little executive privilege, and of course, we have been discussing this with our representative, United States Senator, during the process, keeping them involved in it because they're very involved with the money that comes from Raleigh, as Seth and we discussed. And Roger West's comment to me was, and he's on the committee that helps make these decisions, and his comment was, and I'll paraphrase, "Enough of this money has gone down east, it's time some of it comes to the mountains." So, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but that's words he told me. So I have a letter that I'm giving each one of you. I just got these today. This one's from Commissioner Davis, I mean, from, I keep calling him Commissioner a long time, Senator Davis. And I have one for the media, too, if you guys want one.
You can read this, I'll say.
I'll read it. And I also have one from, if you would, here's one from Roger West as well. And I won't read both of them, they say essentially the same thing, but Senator Davis said, "This has informed me that I'm in full support of the purchase of the old Parker Meadows Farm, 48 acres, and the value of the property," and he says about $750,000. Is that accurate, Jack?
I think it's appraised more recently, I think it's 775.
775. So he was probably using some information he had. But said the value of the property is approximately 750, and the purchase is available for a 50% match from North Carolina Parks and Recreation. In addition, there would be matching monies from the development of the property. I take that as a commitment from him that he's going to help us get those. Everybody nod right there. He said, "I fully support the purpose of the purchase, the construction of two, four leaf clover ball fields, availability of future recreation space. This project represents a tremendous positive economic impact for Macon County." And he mentioned, "As one 13-team tournament would bring approximately 250," these figures are a little different than Tommy's, but they're really pretty close. He said, "13-team tournament brings approximately 250, and if you have a potential of having 25 tournaments a year, totally economic impact would be over $6 million a year." Again, "I'm in full support of the purchase and am available to assist in seeing this project forward." And we will call him. I won't read the one from Rep. West, but it says essentially the same thing, that he's in support of it. So, with that said, I would think we have a really good chance of getting that 50% matching fund, but we can't get to 50% until we buy the property and have it. So with that said, I think we do have a commitment from our folks in Raleigh. Chester, we need to discuss sort of the process of where we are and what we can do at this point.
Well, my understanding, Jack, as well as Seth, have had conversations with the owner of the property.
Alvin.
And has had some others. In any event, as a result of that, some proposed terms have been put together in the form of an offer from the owner of the property to sell the property to Mr. Franklin. I think Mr. Horton has that contractor perhaps has given it to you. I think this would be an appropriate time to discuss those terms. One key component of that offer to sell is that the county would have the ability to basically do diligence, if you will, and look at the site very carefully. You have a period of time, I think roughly about a month, to go over it, have whatever experts you want.
If we could back out of it.
Absolutely.
And part of those discussions, Jack, you jump in, that we had with the owners, again, the property was appraised, and Jack corrected me, it's about 775 is the latest appraisal, excuse me. I don't need the details. We sort of didn't really make an offer, and we can't do that until it's not, but we sort of kick some numbers around. You want to describe that for us, Seth?
Yeah, actually, what we do, we do have an offer, and that's an offer of purchase from the current owner. The current owner is a company by the name of Willow Creek Motor and Ocean Estates, is a subsidiary that are involved in that LLC. But we have an offer, which is an offer to sell the county and purchase based on terms the county attorney mentioned there, for $550,000. That's considerably less than what the appraisal was. And then, I guess you mentioned earlier, we have a very good feeling that we will be able to get some Parks and Recreation Trust Fund money to actually, if the county elects to go ahead and execute this offer to purchase for 550, there's a very good chance that the net cost to county alone will be about 275. So, it's, Chester mentioned, we do have some timetable in here to do some due diligence. I think we said we need to get all our work done by 15th of December, as far as taking sure, I think this will be okay. And then, if it is, then actually we could close the transaction before the end of this calendar year, but on December 31st. But the first thing we would need from the board is approve the agreement for the purchase and sale of the property. As you mentioned, it is 47.94 acres, we're going to say in 48, it's not quite 48, but it's really close to 48 acres, and so it's easy to say that. And I think everybody knows where it is. It's a good opportunity, I think, for the county to move forward on this. We would actually be not asking the county to do any financing loans or anything like that. This is a capital asset that belongs to the county from now on, and we do have special funds in the county's fund balance that will play with the property without having financing.
I would, at this point in time, finance, obviously, the county has indicated that there is not money that is presently budgeted for this purpose. To me, if you're inclined to approve this offer, there would need to be a corresponding budget.
We would put in there that this will be funded from the county's fund balance, that will be held in a separate line item until...
Until we close the transaction.
And I would add that the offer to sell, that's been seen by the county, would need to be pre-ordered once that budget's been moved and then by a financial system.
And I am hoping this is signed by the current owner, indicating that if we offered this amount, that they would accept it. And I would agree with Jack, if we decide to drive forward with this, I would recommend that we not finance it, that we fund it from our fund balance, and then, given the high probability that we can get this money, and I didn't read it from Senator Davis's letter, but he even said in his letter, that the net cost after the match from the state would be 275, which would make our cost about less than $5,000.
Chairman, it may be appropriate at this time to perhaps have this deal speak to the importance of having a site as relative to level as this site is, as per its relevance, when you have to do a tremendous amount of grading from a cost, but the kind of money that you're talking about spending here could very well be saved in grading and then some. Would that not be correct?
I mean, everybody in the room knows that if you're, if you build anything of any size, that you have to have it on grade, the more dirt you live on top, the bigger hill you want to have, the more money it costs. I mean, the Macon School is a good example, Carnegie J School, prime example. Whereas we did save the money on one that was somewhat graded on amount of view. So, if it's already graded and this land also being disturbed, I think it needs to be said, Mr. Manager, that this land being disturbed, it does satisfy archaeological.
Yeah, this land's already been disturbed, so there's very little chance of there to be any problems with the cultural resources, aren't possible. The investigation that will happen immediately, we'll have to, of course, say, if they want an environmental study, make sure there's nothing else out there that's causing a problem. But that's all part of the new bill, just since the property has already been disturbed, as we found out when we were building the new K4 school, we will certainly be in touch with the cultural resources, go up to the county and make sure they're aware of what the county is preparing to do, if they have any concerns about it. But we don't think that there'll be a lot of problem with this, it's a desert, it's been disturbed.
Which is sort of the thing that we talked about here in this process. If you, one, if you buy a site on a mountain to do this, do you know how much grading you have to do, come up with 48 flat acres? I mean, it would be in the millions, it would be in the millions of dollars. The other side of that, if you get a flat piece of property, i.e. an old Macon County Airport, somewhere that's flat, guess what you get into? There was a historical, there was an Indian art, then you get into that. This avoids that because it's already been, whatever grading needs to be done, it needs to be done, also, it's a naturally flat piece of property. So, I think...
Well, I'd like to say this right here, too, as deep and honest as we've got, write down a hand, Mr. Bad in a lot of ways, but in this situation, just give us a free hand, and I maybe shouldn't say a free hand, just give us a hand, and a golden opportunity to say something that we need and have and need applied. And I'm not hoping they want to take that on credit, I'd like to make a motion, probably to make that.
You're making a motion that we approve the offer to purchase for 550,000. And that we take the money from the county's...
And designated fund.
Okay, we have a second motion. Okay. We have a motion as a second for an offer to purchase on this property, the amount of $550,000 to be taken from the county's undesignated fund balance. Do we have any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes four to zero. That motion passes four to zero.
Mr. Beal showed that.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Beal did not vote. He did not participate in the discussion, other than describing grading. Okay. All right.
Once it's purchased and everything, how much time do we need to devote?
That's an excellent question, Seth, and probably, let me just say from, I think a lot of that's going to depend on how quickly and how much money we can get from the state.
Well, assuming that's all, you know, assuming that's done.
Okay, assuming they're going.
Doing money is not an option.
Part of this equation is they'll give us half the money back on the purchase, and then they'll give us half the money back on development. Up to five-hundred thousand.
It's basically going to come down as up to two-hundred twenty. We'll get up to two-hundred twenty-five thousand back.
And then we're hoping there's some additional monies.
Actually, it's on the appraisal value.
Oh, okay. Well, then that's. I thought it was captive.
Seth, I may refer that to you.
The timeframe, the way this fell, at this time of year, we won't have time to actually apply for a part of grant in January. We don't have time to do the planning and everything. It'll be next January before we apply for the part of grant. But we can apply for a thing called a waiver right now, which enables us to move forward and then just pay us, you know, as the time comes. So we can basically move forward with it whenever we want to.
And hopefully, we're going to talk to our folks at the state too about additional monies as we go through this project. If you save a few cents on the dollar, which is what we're doing, we'll do all that again. So with that said, I don't think we plan following this coming.
Not this summer, but hopefully by the next, we'll be playing.
Any other questions?
I have a question. This opportunity, you're saying maybe summer after, next. Should I assume that when this field is finished, it's business? I mean, people are going to start coming right away?
We hope so. I've talked to a couple of tournament directors right now that say, as soon as you get that okay, I want to book my tournaments to have.
I think I can say that. Part of our due diligence in doing this and part of involving Tommy and looking at the economic impact, and also, and I've worn Seth out, called him and said, hey, talk to these tournament directors, which he's done. He's talked, this is just not a theory, I mean, he's talked to these people. We've got something that Gainesville, Georgia doesn't have, that Anderson, South Carolina doesn't have. We're in the mountains. People want to come here.
Exactly.
So we've already heard that from them. So, you know, I guess the answer, do we have contracts that they're going to come? No, but we've got a pretty darn good indication that once we get this facility, we're going to be booked up. I think Tommy's estimates are low. No offense, Tommy. I asked you to be conservative. But I think those are really low estimates, and I think it's low on the number of tournaments. I think we'll wind up with twenty-five tournaments a year.
So my question is, with all of that in place, can Franklin handle what it's going to need to handle? Do we have hotel space? Do we have, I mean, is this sort of a dual purpose here? Should people be building while he's grading?
There's enough, if you start having tournaments north for a forty-eight team, a forty-eight team tournament, no, you wouldn't have enough hotel rooms. But you have enough hotel rooms within a twenty-mile radius.
I think.
But, you know, they're also, this is going to induce people to invest.
Well, I think if you ask your hotel owners and restaurant owners, do you have a hundred percent confidence you can handle the answers, no. And especially if you look, yeah, in July and October, yeah, we're pretty full. But March through November, no. Our occupancy rate is, and Ron Hayden had that in mind, is certainly not anything approaching a hundred percent. I think we certainly have room for that. Will more people build things here because of this? That's. Again, let me give Bill a whole other thought. And this goes back, and I think this board's in agreement, that we as a government, we're not creating jobs here. We're creating opportunity for private enterprise to create jobs. And that's important to think about. What you said is important. Will people build restaurants or motels or whatever? We hope so. We hope so.
We hope they will.
So we're creating the opportunity for private business to do well.
But if they don't, the ones that are here are going to be real.
Really well.
The thing to understand right here too, we're not the ones doing the hunting here. There's people out there right now who miss hits. They're going to be calling us.
Oh, yeah.
They, and I sure hope they call me. I've got some good land for them out there on four forty-one south.
That's exactly.
You know, this isn't by chance, but, you know, Seth shared a story with me. A guy in Florida that had some land and he'd never been an athlete, didn't know what was going on. Millionaire hated toward multi-millionaire because he had the land. And he started the field, but they approached him after that. Motel Six called right away. So I fully expect if we can get that word out and we can get this big plan out and have a plan, not go out there and do a halfway job from right here. That's what concerns me is, you know, we're going to buy this land, yeah, we've got a great deal. Now what are we going to do? You know, if we don't do it right, then we're going to be cheating ourselves. We've got to do it right. Now, that don't mean we have to do it all at one time. Maybe we can't do that. But what we do, we got to do it right. And the sooner we're going to do it right, the sooner somebody's going to be here building motels.
Can you talk about, you talk about a green industry? About as green as it gets. Anyway, with that said, we probably need to move on.
Let me make a real quick comment. Friends talking about the lowest tourist, tourist months in the whole year. As everybody knows, January and February. But the good thing about what we're talking about here is to take the other ten months out of the year, you have any idea of the two worst months that y'all are. The two worst months that I have is in June and August. Right here would be a full film of it. And I hear there are a big motel coming into Franklin right now. But those two months would be very clean tournaments.
Well, guys, thanks for your work. This was the first step to move toward this, and we're going to be doing our due diligence in the next thirty days.
There is going to be a need to, under that agreement, to deliver some first funds to be held in my presence.
I think.
At Jack Horton's recommendation.
I think we already put that in there. Five thousand dollars. Well, I will sign this after your vote tonight and we'll execute this offer. Thank you, gentlemen.
Move on to the for a break. Now, let's do one real quick, Mr. Chairman, before we break.
Yes, sir.
First of all, update on DeVita. The ones who were granted the, for our dialysis center, the lease details are in the final steps. They go to today, at a conference call with them today. If everything goes well, and it appears it is, there has been some delays on the lease. Apparently DeVita does not do this as a company. They have to do an arm with transaction with another company to get the lease for the facility. That's in the final stages. They're looking to start construction on January seventh. That's so bringing up speed on that, a lot of folks have been asking. A little bit on the NCACC. We met in the middle of the hurricanes over, down at the water. Just to give you an idea, Mr. Chairman, if you go down tomorrow, a live session, twenty-one hundred bills were introduced in the legislature. Now, as of yesterday, you've got eight-hundred-and-seventy-one registered lobbyists walking the floor of the legislature. For a hundred-and-seventy legislators, that's expected to resume up. This is a little place to be concerned with the county. The attitude's going to be more important ever as we go on this session of the legislature, after passing down the counties. We keep seeing a little bit of money, a little bit at a time, coming back as unfunded mandates to the counties. The latest one was done in the three o'clock session in the morning, life thing done. That's from the Health and Human Services. And this is concerning belt chair homes, which you know about, Mr. Chairman, or we've planned, you know about that. It was piced at fifty percent. Now the county has to pick up that cost. That's just a little over a hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars to those of us in Macon County. This is an unfunded mandate, I was directed from the legislature to the county. One of many that's now called, well, not called mandates, well, they're called partnership. So that's fifty percent we're having to pay for that. This is about, this is several of them that we could, that just keep coming. So this board needs to be very much aware of that and to move along. We really want to be, have a partnership run. And so we need the hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand dollars in Macon County. This is still being worked on. This is going to be one of the legislative goals that the chairman will be working on tomorrow in Raleigh. Get that overturned as soon as possible. We're not very hopeful with that, but we'll give it a shot. So that's one of the things. Next thing, the last thing, Mr. Chairman, is as far as the NCACC goes, you meet, mark the calendars, everybody will all go down in February. And we'd like for all this board to be able to go all we can. So we'll get that information, so mark the calendars for the thirty-third in February. That's tentative with the plan. It's going to be a special meeting. It's not the assembly day, but we go down and meet the newly elected votes and the newly elected governor. And tell them how much we appreciate them, outstanding, noble partnership. So we'll be doing, working on that. Thank you.
Brett?
Thank you.
Gentlemen, let's take a short break. Good, I've got a long way to go.